These days, current events unfold on a dozen channels. Headlines all seem to be shouting. And good news can be as scarce as a moment to relax. So let's turn down the noise this summer. Unplug just a little bit. And head to a shelter from the storms of life. The historic port city of Alpena. Located on the sunrise shore of Michigan. Only a few hours drive, but miles away from the way to the world. Nestled between a vast forest and an endless clear blue bay. Where the wonders of nature are as welcoming as the local hospitality. We can explore more than 200 shipwrecks in the largest freshwater sanctuary anywhere. Count the stairs to the top of a lighthouse. Or the mass that jut into the harbor sky at moonrise. Let's take a trip to the friendly picturesque city of Alpena. A haven from the world. That's pure Michigan. Your trip begins at Michigan.org.
For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the municipal council meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the city of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Good evening and welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting, February 2nd, 2015. Call the order please.
Johnson, here. Nielsen, here. Noah?
Here.
Sexton?
Here.
Walagora?
Here.
Let's rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everyone had an opportunity to read the minutes of regular session, January 19th, 2015. Any modifications to the agenda this evening? I'm gonna propose that we just add a announcement to Thursday's, of Thursday's meeting down, which would be 8A. For the, just to announce IG. I can't do that. I appreciate that.
I will, so moved.
Second.
Roll please.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. No other modifications. Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. The only exception tonight would be anything having to do with the public hearing on the grant application for the two vehicles for the police department will come up later, but anything else, you're welcome to come to the podium and state your name and address for our records.
Angie Skiba, 635 River Street. I was just hoping that, I don't know what the rules are, when the little snow blower comes around the city of the Market Square block. The city block that is the entrance to Lamar Park is about this deep, and kids were trying to trudge through it today. I'm wondering if that block, that portion in front of the city-owned lot could be added to the snow plowing that they do with that little machine? I just thought it might be considered if that would be a possibility that you could think of.
Well, what you just did will work because the engineer is here this evening, so it would be about the same as calling him on the phone and asking.
Awesome. Okay, thank you. I didn't know if it had to be approved or how, what channels to go through, because the kids were trying to get through it. They're just, I thought they're all wet and I just thought I'd try to, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you, Eddie. Can't make any promises for you, but I'm sure Rachel will look into it. The consent agenda this evening, bills to be allowed in the amount of $203,731.8 and the approval of resolution number 2015-101A, a resolution for matching funds for M.D. category A grant.
Will we approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second. Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
No presentations. The announcement I added was just a reminder that the Alpena County Intergovernmental Council Meeting is this Thursday at 7:00 PM at the Maple Ridge Township Hall. Two major topics are hydraulic fracturing and Alpena South Side Quarter Initiative. Anyone that would like to come out to that? No proclamations. Tonight we have a public information hearing. U.S. Department of Agriculture Rural Development Grant Application for Two Police Vehicles. I'll open the public information session with a report from Chief Jett, I believe.
Good evening. As council aware, some months ago, I believe, September or so, we began the grant application with USDA for two replacement patrol cars again. Last year, we acquired funding from USDA and hopefully the leases have all again. We're estimating that each vehicle roughly ballpark is going to be about $40,000, that's going to be fully equipped, being the vehicle plus our emergency equipment with it. And if we receive funding from the USDA, we'll receive approximately $16,000 for a ditch patrol car. So two grants would be $32,000. Just received, well, we've done the pre-application, we're on track to pass some agencies, so we may get past that point. And we received information that we're still on track for approval. And just received an email a day or so ago from the area specialist out of Travis City, the one who hosts the application. And she indicated that Michigan has not yet received allocation yet for 2015. They're in a holding pattern, but that's on, it was the same thing with the last application. So I'm now really concerned about that. So we're still very optimistic that we'll improve, hopefully. Any questions?
Really? Yeah, oh, go ahead.
That's Department of Agriculture, eh?
Yes, sir, I know.
Seems kinda odd, but...
I agree, but their rural development is involved in a number of, this is what they do, and I agree, everybody kind of scratched their heads when I heard USDA, including me. But we've been very happy with them. The only downside to any grant application is time consuming. But they have streamlined the process somewhat from even last year. And so also, being that we just recently went through some of the things that we had to kind of jump through the hoops initially, we didn't have to do this at the time, so you know, feel pretty good about it.
Really, the only question I had was, I'll just say for our CIP meeting.
Very good.
Because I've got very few questions during that, so, you know, hold. Not a big deal, but excellent.
Thank you.
Open the public comment section. Any public comment on that? Any written comments received by Clerk's office?
We did not.
Close the public comment, open for city discussion?
We don't, we don't need to...
Not really, that part, we're not making...
We don't need to caution or anything, we just have to have an informational meeting. That's what we did last year. But just if there is support, I'm assuming that council does support this project?
No, he doesn't.
Yeah.
So he doesn't, Chief doesn't need any action of any kind?
No, he just had to have the meeting, we published it.
I saw that.
Yeah.
Okay, report of officers. We have treasurer's quarterly financial report through December 31st, 2014.
First of all, I will make this bigger next time. I had in my head to have it all on one page, but I can see that it's very small. As of December 31st, we're halfway through our fiscal year. Our revenue is slightly over 66% of our budget, and our expenses are at about 51% of our budget. In my quarterly report, the top left box shows those numbers. The chart below it gives a quick view of the revenue and expenses as budgeted, and then the year-to-date. The aqua is the revenue, and then the darker green is the expenses. The larger box on the right breaks down general fund by department, gives a little detail. I'd like to point out a few items in the expenditures. The third line down says Lakeside Authority. Really, that's the building authority. That authority is a funding process that you can go through, and we did that for the Lakeside Motel when we bought it, and we did it for the DPW building. The Lakeside Motel's almost paid off, and then we'll continue to make payments on the DPW building. All that, it's really a department in the general fund, all that is for is to make a debt payment. So that's why you'll see that it's high, because we make a debt, we make a principal and interest payment in the fall, and then we just make an interest payment in the spring. Uh, let's see. Then on the cemetery, that's just high because most of our expenses are in the summer, as I've said before, with our summer help and our mowing and all of the expenses that go with that. Our fire and ambulance have gone through a lot with some of our long-term employees retiring, getting ready to retire. We have hired three new employees, training, supplies, uniforms, so our expenses are higher there and Bill's aware of it, so we'll be looking at that. As far as public works, again, that's more of a seasonal in the summer where most of the parks get taken care of. And then the insurance costs increased a little bit just because we've been getting some new vehicles, so that's gonna, just, it won't be real large, but that did increase it. Repairs and supplies are over a little bit, and then again, we'll just watch that. Again, that would probably be more of a, because of the summer usage on that. Under other financing uses, what that is, is when the general fund transfers money to the street funds, the marina, some of those that we subsidize. So we did half of them, we do half in December, usually the streets, and then we wait and see if the marina needs it and the building officials department, if they need their, it's budgeted and we, if we need to subsidize those or not. So that's what transfers to others are. And in the bottom graph, I just put in as a historical look at revenue and expenses and the fund balance. The bottom line is the fund balance since 1997 through 2014. And then the revenue and expenses, the red is the expenses and the green is the revenue on the top line there. So that gives a little bit of a quick glimpse at what we've been going through. And just one thing, a little bit as we get into the budget session, I know that we have a large fund balance, but we also have a lot of capital needs and items like that, so I know our revenue's not coming in, even though we're steady, it's not going down anymore. I hope that it'll go up, but not to the point where we have a lot of surplus. So our fund balance is healthy. However, we do have a lot of needs, especially with our capital. So it'll, it'll be another challenge this year, too. Is there any questions on that?
I have one. Go ahead. In other funding uses, if, if the need isn't there for all of the money, does the money just stay in the general fund until?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
On revenue, you have 51% of our revenue sharing's come. Do we get the rest of it by the end of the fiscal year?
Yes. And sometimes that last payment will get maybe July or August, but it accrues back. There's always, they, all the, it used to be bi-monthly, but they've changed a lot of how we get the revenue, but we always get it in that fiscal year.
Anything else surprising to you as far as, other than, you know, you mentioned the ambulance fund a little bit, but anything else a little out of line or anything? I couldn't see anything here, but just your opinion, no?
No. What, and what I'll try to do is, under the notes to the financial report, if something happens that's unusual, I will try to note that.
Okay.
As you noticed there, I did put a few things on some debt we're getting rid of, that's always a good thing. Some of the little loans that helped us do some of the capital, like the Starlight Beach project. So we'll be getting rid of those next year. Other than that, we just gotta watch our expenses.
Well, this is pretty user-friendly, this is the first time you've had this format, so I appreciate that.
Yes. And I'll try to get this online, I'll see if Steve will put it online tomorrow, so that anybody that wants to see it can do so.
I really, really appreciate this. The conciseness, but it tells a hu, all the story. It's, I really appreciate this. Thank you very much.
I'll just do it, I'll just make it a little bigger next time, but, thanks.
Really, it's, I'm all right, I don't know about everybody else. I love a one, I love a one pager, I just love it. It's really nice.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Yep. So I just need to receive and file if everybody's questions are answered?
So moved.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Okay, no qualifications, unfinished business. New business, low to moderate income survey. Add a pause here.
All right. There's been a great deal of interest from, from a number of downtown property owners who'd like to utilize the MEDC facade grant to improve the future appearance of the building. Under the current status with the ME, under our current status with the MEDC, any facade required new job creation be eligible for funds. New job creation is not possible for most of the buildings in question, as many either have or desire to convert their upper levels of these buildings into housing units, which will create housing, but unfortunately, no new job creation. The state will drop the job creation requirement if a community's population has 51% of the individuals within the low to moderate income status. According to data collected by HUD between 2006 and 2010, Alpena's population is at 48.49%. The MEDC allows communities over 41% to conduct a survey using certified, using certified individuals associated with state universities to certify the surveys if significant cause is given. Oh, that makes sense. In addition, the MEDC allows cities to only survey a geographic portion of their community rather than the entire city. Nearly all the grants available through the MEDC are limited to the downtown area. Because of these limitations, an application was submitted to the MEDC to allow for a certify to be conducted in the downtown and surrounding residential neighborhoods. That application was recently approved by the MEDC. Many northern Michigan communities have already completed or are in the process of completing this type of survey, including Rogers City, East Tawis, Gaylord, Sault Ste. Marie. The MEDC only allows for six individuals in the entire state to certify these surveys. These individuals work for state universities and have a background in statistical analysis. Of the six certified experts, only Dr. Kurt R. Kurt Mulden of Lake Superior State is located north of Lansing. In addition to certifying the survey, Dr. Mulden will also conduct the survey using a team of students from Lake Superior State University. Dr. Mulden has conducted similar, similar surveys for Sault Ste. Marie and Gaylord. He's also scheduled to conduct a survey in Escanaba in February. In addition, he has a long track record of conducting other surveys and research projects. After talking with Dr. Mulden, he noted that he could complete the survey by the end of March, which would allow for the potential, for potential projects to start at, yeah, this spring. Dr. Mulden noted that the cost of this project would run between $7,000 and $7,400 to conduct and certify the survey. In addition, talking to staff from both Sault Ste. Marie and Gaylord, they recommended using Dr. Mulden for this process and pointed out the speed and cost effectiveness of the process. The quoted price appears reasonable and is within the budgeted for the survey. After talking to the other five state-certified individuals allowed to certify these surveys, only one of them was willing to actually conduct the survey, but noted he was too busy to conduct it. But he did give a price estimate of $7,000. If we were willing to wait till he was available, but he wasn't able to give the time. Other methods could potentially be employed to conduct the survey, including utilizing other planning agencies or local volunteers, but the survey would still need to be certified by one of the six MEDC-approved individuals, and no one else would have, appear to have the expertise and familiarity, familiarity with this survey to get it conducted in a fast and cost-effective manner. In addition, the survey needs to meet MEDC requirements for accuracy and confidentiality, something that would appear to be best done by an expert in the field rather than volunteers. In addition, benefiting the downtown property owners with a facade grant, another grant the city would become eligible for would be the Downtown Infrastructure Grant. These grants can be up to $750,000 and are giving to, and this is their words, holistic infrastructure projects and have design elements that contribute to creating a unique environment in the community. So I looked at some of the projects they've translated to figure out what they meant by that, and a number of local communities around the state have been able to utilize this dig grant to improve streets, vary utility lines, improve streetscapes, lighting, add trees, et cetera. So I'd ask that council approve my request to utilize Dr. Mulden's services to conduct and certify a low to moderate income survey for the downtown area and surrounding residential neighborhoods. He would appear to be the only source capable of conducting the survey in a timely and cost-effective manner that would not delay the project scheduled for the summer and will meet accuracy and confidentiality requirements of the MEDC. And then a couple things that Greg wanted me to bring up, this fact, we did budget for this process. Last year, we set aside $25,000. At the time, we were anticipating that we would have, either have to do the entire city or it wasn't clear if we would be allowed to do a smaller area. Since then, we've looked at basically, nearly every grant we could possibly get is limited to the downtown area, so we figured, let's not do the entire city, and let's focus on the area, because I'm like, that's gonna be the area benefited for it. So, and then the reason we didn't can, limit it to just the GDA proper, we did have to expand it to some of the residential neighborhoods and that, because for the Downtown Infrastructure Grant, we are required to have more residential structures than commercial, and then other structures, commercial, industrial, nonprofit. So in order to get the number of residential structures up, instead of just residential units, we actually had to go into the neighborhoods. So there's a, and that are mainly the areas that are gonna be surveyed, obviously these are surveyed, the residential areas. So at this point, we, he is able to do that on this March, and that will help tremendously with some of the projects we have for the summer.
The survey, Adam, when we conduct it, does it have a shelf life, or is it only good for, you know, two, three years, five years?
It is good until HUD comes out with new numbers.
Okay.
Formerly, the last numbers we had from HUD were in 2000, however, last, late last year, they did come out with new numbers, which actually, we were at 47%, now we're at 48.49. So it was about, in that particular cycle, what, 13 years between HUD numbers coming out? So this is only good till the next HUD numbers come out, but at the very least, we can get the projects on our, on our list done, so they're gonna be very beneficial, and I don't think HUD's gonna come out with new numbers for at least five years. There's actually, like, for instance, Gaylord is going through the process of re-surveying because they were actually, they weren't qualified before, and the new numbers came out and they were no longer, so they're, they're utilizing the gentleman I'm referring to as well.
And we, um, his fee is, his fee isn't based on what he finds, it's based on the survey itself, obviously, so if he finds his survey gives you the exact same numbers, then, then that's just what it is? We just, but we go by what?
Correct. Basically, his job is to make sure this is done as scientifically as possible and make sure it's as accurate as possible. I have reason to believe, basing the fact that HUD's numbers are generated between 2006 and 2010, obviously, we've had some significant changes occur in those years regarding our economic situation, so I think there won't be any problems, especially for the survey area.
What qualifies as moderate income? I mean, is it basically middle-class, or is it?
Um, I would say basically, if my numbers are correct, it's somewhere between about $35,000 per household. Give or take, I'm not, I don't, that's not 100% precise, but that's about it.
And for the MEDC grant, you said it's just residential? But if we wanted to look at that dig grant that should include commercial, too, or?
The dig grants for the actual downtown commercial areas, but we have to have more residential structures in this, in the surveyed area, which doesn't make a whole lot of sense considering it's principally for commercial, but that's what, that's the rule, so that's why we had to incorporate a few, a couple extra blocks going out, because those numbers matched.
And that's what that is?
Correct. So you'll see a few areas to South Town, a few areas north of, north of downtown that are included.
Now, where is there any real method to that, or are you just trying to get a certain number of households included?
Basically, I needed a certain number, and the other thing they looked at, I asked them that question, whether, you know, there was a method or not, and they said, we have to justify to them why we chose that area. That area, I justified, especially the north, because most of the employers that had, that had, have any job cuts to qualify for this, were located in, up in that vicinity. So that was a logic I used, and they took that, so.
Thanks.
In order to get permission to this area, we have to talk with them about potential things that might have affected our low to moderate income status, principally being jobs lost for certain major employers, so.
Awesome.
Thanks, Adam.
And you need a, you need action to hire the...
Basically, I'm asking to be able to utilize them for the sole source, because we could go through the bidding process on this, but this gentleman's probably, everything, from everybody I've talked to, he's best qualified and rates are reasonable, and can do it fast enough to get us for this building cycle.
And he's only, I mean, not that it matters, because numbers are numbers, but he's, what, $20,000, $2,500 outside of what you wouldn't ordinarily bid on anyhow? Isn't it five grand? Do we... What's our bid policy for even having to put a bid out?
Oh, 10.
10?
I was supposed to check what you were asking.
Because we're...
And I probably didn't word it very well, either. I knew what I meant. But that'd be just fair enough anyhow, so. I move we approve Dr. Mycene, last name like Mulden's, service for low-income survey of the downtown and residential area.
Second. Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Thank you, Adam. Next up is Support Emergency Operations Plan.
Public Act 390 of 1976 is known as the Emergency Management Act. It requires that each community in Michigan have an emergency manager and an emergency management operations plan. Communities of over 10,000 have the option of having their own emergency management program, or they can opt to fall under the county's plan. Communities under 10,000 must fall under the county's plan. Apparently, the state has never noticed that we have over 10,000 people, so it's the first time they brought that to our attention here over the summer, communicated with Mayor Walagora, and out of that came these documents that you see in your packet. Originally, years ago, state funding was available to assist in operating emergency management programs, and if we had been a program way back then, they would have paid for half, the state would have paid for half the salary of the emergency manager. But that ship sailed away along that ago, and so now there are requirements, but there isn't any money. The county doesn't charge the city for providing emergency management services. Mark Risco is the Alpena County Emergency Management Coordinator and 911 Director, who's been very accessible and cooperative and was pivotal in putting together these documents for us. The Support Emergency Operations Plan that you had in your packet addresses the responsibilities of the mayor's office and of all of the key departments in what we would do in a disaster if it were to occur in our community before we call in county resources. Now, the county is two blocks up from us, so it wouldn't be too long before we call in county resources, but we got a plan, you gotta have a plan. All department heads have gone through that and agreed to their respective, respective areas of responsibility in terms of damage assessment with the assessor and building department, police services, a number of different responsibilities. The state requires that a formal resolution be passed by each community to either accept its responsibility as an independent emergency management organization or delegate that responsibility to the next layer up. And what this resolution, resolution does is formally delegates the responsibility of overall emergency management coordination to the county, who's already providing that service for everyone else in Alpena County. Do you need me to read the resolution over the record?
I don't believe so.
Or have you all read it and you're happy?
I read it.
Excellent. It's the last item on the agenda.
I wanted you to read it.
You okay?
In any case, the action we need is if, if you're in agreement, I would like you to pass this resolution, so I can give it to the county and they can give it to the state, and everybody will smile.
Okay. It was, yeah, I think I would probably just, other than the details of, of this being easier and not having funds and whatnot, I think I would probably be in favor of doing it this way, regardless of whether we had a lot of money, it's a great cooperation. Mark is very, very talented and knows, knows coordination, and we've been involved in exercises already.
And you have the Emergency Management Liaison Officers, and that's Chief Jett and myself, and I did, so we're your city emergency management liaison, but Mark is supporting.
We're really just formalizing how we do it anyway.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
As long as you're happy with it.
It's all good.
Just for, just for curiosity, is, doesn't the base have a presence? Does the airbase have a presence on this?
The airbase has a presence on the local planning team and the local emergency planning committee, but their emergency management outside of the base grounds, the civilian portion of the airport is covered by the... the airport is covered by the county as well.
Okay.
Inside the base, they have their own program.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I move we adopt Resolution 2015-03.
Second.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi. Thank you. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.